Welcome to the Wyoming Retirement System. It's our Spring Town Hall meeting. We're talking to you live from the offices of WRS in Cheyenne, Wyoming. And we welcome you to our presentation seating. We're going to take your questions that are coming in over the email and see if we can answer your questions about retirement and financial planning for your future. We're proud to run the Wyoming Retirement System where our mission is to administer the system. Our vision is to partner with you and your employers for financial security for public employees and their families. So, thank you for turning in. We've got a short presentation that we'll give you in a few minutes, but first, we thought we'd start off by answering a few questions just to show you what's going to go on in the rest of the show. I'm Dave Swindell, the Executive Director of the system, and I'm joined by Mike Leakley, the Deputy Director. Mike, what's our first question?
Great, thank you Director Swindell. Our first question is about the retirement process and retirement planning. So, the person writes, "Before your retirement date, when should you bet with WRS and start planning?"
Well, that's a complicated question, but I'd answer it this way. A person should start planning for retirement when they enter the workforce at age 22 or whatever, because it's important for folks as they enter the workforce to understand their retirement-saving options, the 457 plan or the 401K that may be offered by their employer, or their 403B option, or if they're working for a WRS employer, that they understand their pension and how the pension works and understand the benefit that they are about to build. You should check in with the retirement system and look at our website and look at the handbooks about every 10 years or so. Within about five years of retirement, it's probably time to contact the offices for the first time and get a formal estimate to make sure your service credit is being accounted for the way you thought it was and to have any questions answered, and so that you know what decisions you're going to have to make when you actually do retire. And it's probably advisable to check in about a year prior to retirement to make sure that all that stuff is still on track for you. It's really not necessary to apply for retirement sooner than about 30 days out, because we can't actually do anything with your retirement application until we receive your final contributions from your employer and a termination notice from your employer. You're not allowed to draw a retirement benefit and still keep working in the plan at the same time, except under special circumstances. So, we have to receive a termination notice and the final contributions before we can finalize your retirement. So, about 30 days out for that, because you should be aware that, you know, we may need a copy of our birth certificate or have some other questions. You need to think about what beneficiary you want to designate and what your retirement options are for your beneficiaries and so on. So, that's basically it. Start planning as soon as you enter the workforce. Check in about every decade or so. Make sure you understand your benefit. About five years out, get a formal estimate. One year out, check in one more time and file for retirement about 30 days before your planned retirement date.
Great, thank you Dave.
And since you asked me a question, I'll ask you a question. I'm going to ask you, since you're the Deputy and answer all this technical stuff, I'm going to ask you a question about insurance. "I got a letter about my options for insurance after I retire. Will those rates go down if I plan to use this insurance as my secondary after what Medicare will pay?"
Well, thanks for that question. I think that one of the common misconceptions that people don't always realize is that the retirement system actually does not administer health insurance for the state of Wyoming or for any of our employee groups. The health insurance is actually administered by Employees Group Insurance, and that's a division of the Department of Administration and Information. They send out a newsletter and it's on their website, or you can contact them called the Benefits Press, and this is going to have the rates for health insurance both before Medicaid, or I'm sorry, Medicare and after retirement. So, pre-65 is a higher rate. Once you hit Medicare eligibility, you go to a lower rate, and those rates are published by Employees Group Insurance. But again, the Wyoming Retirement System does not administer the health insurance for the state of Wyoming.
Yeah, our only linkage is it's for retirees. If you're paying an insurance premium to EGI, you could have that taken out of your pension as a convenience to you.
Right.
That's it.
Thanks Dave.
Okay, well then, we've answered a couple of questions and we've got a bunch more that have come in over the email. We're happy to answer those as best we can. Right now, I'm going to turn it over to our prerecorded presentation. We've got a few slides to show you an overview of the system. So, Michael, if you would run the video presentation. Thanks a lot. Welcome to the Wyoming Retirement System's Spring Town Hall. We're recording this session just a couple of days in advance to make the session move more quickly during the live presentation that we'll be doing Tuesday night. We'll have a series of slides to show to you to update you on the information about the Wyoming Retirement System, and then we'll take questions and we'll have a good meeting. Thanks for attending. "Our vision is to partner to build financial securities for members and their families." Here's the agenda we're going to be following. Talk a little bit about the system, talk about the importance of pension to members. We'll discuss some recent legislation. We'll discuss cost-of-living adjustments, governance of the system, and overview of our investments, and give you some additional resources if you want to know more about the Wyoming Retirement System. I'm Dave Swindell. I'm the Executive Director of the system, and I work for the Wyoming Retirement System Board. Mike is my Deputy Director, and together, we work with the Board to accomplish the mission of the agency and to keep your retirement system safe. We're going to be talking in the next few slides about the importance of the pension to members. The pension is important particularly in the public sector, because the public sector is a service industry, and taxpayers expect and need employees with more tenure and more experience. So, it helps to have a benefit structure that facilitates that, and a pension is one way that happens. The Wyoming Retirement System includes members of all types of public employment. Because of the name, some people think it's only state employees, but really, it's school districts that are our largest membership. We also have members in cities, counties, special districts. We have firefighters, we have law enforcement, we have higher education at the University of Wyoming and the Community College, as well as state government. Wherever you see a public employee, chances are, WRS is there. WRS membership includes eight defined benefit plans. The biggest one is the Public Employee Plan. It has most of our members, about 86% to 88% of our membership, our economic activity and our workload. As you can see on the, we have almost 29,000, heading towards 30,000 beneficiaries that we're paying every month. Active employees are in the blue side, and you can see that it's pre-K-12 education that makes up the biggest part of that. The state of Wyoming with these state agencies is the largest single employer, but you can clearly see that it's really all about the teachers. And then, we also have counties, cities, and other districts. And then finally, in the tan, you can see people who have terminated employment, but they've left their money on deposit with us, and they have, they've worked long enough to have invested benefit. The other plans that we administer, we administer eight defined benefit plans. These seven other plans are all about public safety and judges, and these plans are specifically tailored to meet the employment needs in those specific sectors. If you add it all up with all the retirees of about 30,000, about 41,000 active members, and all the people that have left money on deposit with us, we have more than 100,000 member accounts. That's like one in seven Wyomingites. It's equivalent to selling out War Memorial Stadium at the university three and a half times. WRS membership. Our oldest retiree is 108 years old, and it illustrates the point that one of the risks in retirement is actually longevity risk. I know, it's an odd industry. Living longer is considered a risk, but financially, it is, and that's why having a lifetime benefit from a pension is so important. We have 17 retirees over 100 years old, and we have 715 retirees that are over age 90. And our longest-paid service retiree retired way back in 1970, more than 50 years ago. Pensions are important in the public sector, because it's the biggest tool for public sector employers to attract and retain staff. Taxpayers aren't always able to pay the wages that we see in the private sector. There's no bonuses, there's no revenue sharing, and there's sometimes limited advancement. So, the pension becomes a way we can attract public employees to do the important work of the public sector. A pension is designed to promote employee retention and career service, and you can see that in WRS. A long service retiree worked from 1958 until 2019. He worked for almost six, more than, you know, 59 years, almost 60 years. And there are 94 members in the system actively serving that have served 40 years or more. They're still working. And 450 members with 35 years of service, and they're still working. Pensions are important to public employees. When you do surveys of public employees, whether you do it in Wyoming or nationally, you can see that the pension is important or mostly important in keeping them in their current jobs. It's the reason that your fifth-grade teacher was willing to put up with you back in the fifth grade. When you do a national survey, retirement benefits rate very highly amongst all employment benefits. It's really only trumped only by health insurance, but it's retirement benefits that are more important than all these other things like job security, salary, paid vacation, career advancement, all these things, that they all are secondary to a pension. The pension is not a big benefit. People think that the pension benefits sometimes are very large. You read some headline stories from other states or other situations. But the average annual benefit paid to retirees in Wyoming last year was only 22,000 a year. It's a good benefit. It lasts a lifetime, but it's not that big. It's only about $1,800 a month, and that's for an employee that has on average more than 20 years of service. A lot of the monthly payments are actually pretty small. You will read about, and you may hear people drawing large monthly paychecks, and there are some. There are some doctors, there are deans at the university that have worked for 30 or 40 years, and those are more highly-paid professionals. But we're putting out almost 8,000 of our checks every month, or less than $500. That's out of about 31,000 payments going out, and a lot of them just are not that big, as you can see on the chart. Nonetheless, they provide an important stabilizing benefit for members and communities. Let's talk about communities. Last year, the Wyoming Retirement System paid out more than $700 million in benefits. Most of that went to zip codes within Wyoming, 557 million of it. You can see the breakout by county here. As you would expect, down in Laramie County with Cheyenne and state government, that's where the majority went. Albany County with 45 million because of the state university. But other counties also received substantial benefits. These funds flowed into communities throughout the state, and in some places, like I'll nominate Fremont County where I grew up. $45 million a year, that's a big payroll. That's more than 3% of county income. So, the retirement benefits not only benefit members of the retirement system when they're retired, it also benefits all the communities, because these dollars flow directly into the economy, and retirees will spend their money. So, this is an important stabilizing element, not only for members and their families, but also for Wyoming communities. Of course, there's a cost to providing a pension, but actually, compared to all the employment benefits, pensions don't cost that much. The state average across the United States is about 5% of public spending is devoted towards pension expense. Wyoming's much less. We're about 2.13%, as you can see on the chart. In the end, I don't think it's true that pension spending is crowding out government services. The public sector has to have a public workforce, and this is actually a fairly inexpensive way of retaining and attracting that workforce. Most of the pension is actually funded not by employee contributions, not by employer contributions, but by investment earnings. And it's important that we have a good investment system to generate the pension income necessary to fund the pensions. Employers put in about 16%, employees put in about 14%, but over recent years, on average, more than 70% of the pension payments are actually financed by investment earnings. And that's why the pension is such a good deal for members and for taxpayers. The Wyoming Retirement System Board thinks that there's three layers of retirement income that are important to secure the financial security going forward for members and their families. The first is social security, which provides important insurance benefits as well as retirement benefits. Most public employees in Wyoming are covered by social security. That's not necessarily true in all states. Public employees were entered into the social security system through changes in the law back in 1950 through 1953, and there was agreements between the states and the federal government as to how to enroll public employees. Public employees sometimes had a chance if they had an effective pension system. In many cases, especially in the public safety sector, there was an effective pension system in place, and they could opt out of social security. In Wyoming, most public employees voted to stand into social security with the exception of paid firefighters. Amongst the eight defined benefit plans that WRS administers, Paid Fire B is not in social security except for one employer. Most Fire V folks do not participate in social security, and therefore, their pension from WRS is their sole retirement benefit. In addition to social security, the Retirement Board believes you should have a defined benefit pension, something that will provide you a guaranteed income for your lifetime. That's not going to be enough in itself, with social security and a pension, to necessarily provide full retirement security in retirement. Therefore, it's necessary for members to participate with their own personal savings. In many cases, this is best done through a tax-advantaged savings program like our 457 plan, or a 401K, or 4013B that may be offered by the employer. I've used some terms. We ought to talk about it. A defined benefit pension plan is what you think of when you have a traditional pension. Its characteristics are shown here. It's a monthly payment for life. The risks of longevity, the risks of the investment, they're all pooled. You don't have to bear those individually. It doesn't really matter how long you live as a particular person. Matters just what the averages is. So, there can be some people that have exceedingly long lifespans, and we provide them a lifetime benefit. The benefit is typically based on a percent of salary. The investments are professionally managed by our investment team. We'll talk about that a little later in the presentation. It's primarily designed for security. Now, a defined contribution plan is more of what you think of when you have a 401K or a 457, an IRA, or one of these other tax-advantaged savings programs. Typically here, the risks are almost all borne by the individual, longevity risk, investment risk, inflation risk, because the benefit is not defined by how much you earned. It depends upon what your account balance is. It's how much you put in and how well you invested it. It's really, the benefit's defined by your contribution. That's why it's called a defined contribution or a DC plan. Typically, the investments are self-directed. The advantage of these systems often is they can be designed for portability. Ideally, it's as a sidecar or as a supplement to a defined benefit plan, the way we have it. The Wyoming Retirement System's structure is shown here. We manage eight defined benefit pension plans, and we also act as the plan sponsor for one of the supplemental savings plan that's available to public employees. That's our 457 deferred compensation program. The Board of Directors is appointed by the Governor, and they hire the Executive Director. And then, in turn, we hire the staff. We have 47 full-time employees. Our governance consists of the Board of Directors. We report to the Joint Appropriations Committee of the Legislature, and we've had legislative liaisons since 1997. The Board of Directors, including the elected Wyoming State Treasurer, the Honorable Kurt Meyer, and then, we have 10 members that are appointed by the Governor and confirmed by the Senate. Five of those members, half of the Board, is representing the community at large. They have no previous association with the system. They aren't retirees, they aren't public employees. The other five represent the interests of each constituent group. Higher education, we have Dr. Travers. Retirees, Vicki Colgan. Public schools, Kay Watson. And public employees, we have Mike Sabios and Eric Nelson. All of these people, though, work with the Board together. When you have a board meeting, you can't tell who's an at-large trustee versus someone who may be appointed from a particular group. They all work in concert to provide retirement security and to govern the system. There's a number of folks that the Board works with. We have an actuary. We've hired Gable Roder Smith out of the Denver office. That's a well-known actuarial firm providing services nationwide. The Board employs an independent investment consultant, Makita Investments, out of the Portland office. We use a separate consultant on our 457 plan to advise us of best practices and how well the funds are meeting the needs of our membership. That's RVK out of the Portland office. We utilize a custody bank to organize our $9 billion investment portfolio. We have a contract with Northern Trust. Our financial system is independently audited by an external auditor. We've utilized the firm of Ike Bailey out of the Boise office. And then, we have relationships with all these employee groups, including the Wyoming Education Association, the Wyoming Retired Education Personnel, the Wyoming Association of Municipalities, and the Wyoming Association of Counties. And we work closely with the Joint Appropriations Committee of the Legislature and their four liaisons that are appointed to the Board. We're still in the process of implementing some contribution rate increases. We're nearly through with this. We'll be the last stage this summer. On the 1st of July in 2021, the total contribution rate will increase 50 basis points, or half a percent, in the Public Employee Plan, reaching a total of 18.62%, as shown on this slide. The contribution rate was increased in stages to make that easier on employees and employers, but we'll achieve the new contribution rate later this summer. The funding status of the plan is shown on this slide, and by funding status, we mean how much money do you have in the plan, and how much does that compare to the estimated value of all the benefits that you expect to pay out in the future? Basically, the calculation is a point in time. You view all of the potential liabilities that you may pay out of the system. The pensions you know are in force today, the ones you think you're going to pay 30 years from now, the liabilities that you're incurring for an employee that was hired just this last year. You add all that up, and you discount that back to present value mathematically, and you compare to the assets we have on hand. And those assets are discounted by the assumed rate of return, how much money you expect to earn while those deposits from the employee contributions and employer contributions are being made. As a result of some changes over the years, mostly being more conservative and assuming lower rates of return, systems that were fully funded at one point, at the stroke of a pencil, were less than fully funded. And that's what's happened to Wyoming. These contributions, or these funding statuses that you see are actually very typical nationwide. Wyoming is a little better. The national funding situation for broad public employee plans is about 71%. As you can see here, we're almost at 75%. So, we're a few percentage points better, but not greatly, and all of these percentages are just estimates, especially going forward. And so, sometimes, when you take things out to the decimal point, it lends, like, there's more precision here than is really true. These are estimates. But we're, in the Public Employee Plan, we're at 74.8% today, and it's on the right path. By 2046, we'll be above 100%, and the actuaries believe that if we meet all of the assumptions and everything goes to plan, we'll be above 100% at that point. The most important thing probably is to consider all this in terms of position, speed, and direction. 75%, that's about where you're at. That's pretty tight. Direction, are things getting better? Yep, we're heading in the right direction. We'll get to 100% within the 30 years analyzed by the Retirement System Board. How fast are you getting, or what's your speed? Probably not as fast as people would like. That's the situation. Here's the situation for the other plans. As you can see, Wardening Patrol is about what the Public Employee Plan is. You're 79%, getting to 100%, above 100% by 2046. The Volunteer System, about the same funding percentage, but it's also heading in the right direction, but much faster. Its speed is better. They're projected to get to 100% or above it by 2031. Same way with Fire B, same way with Judicial. Law enforcement, actually better funded than Wardening Patrol and public employees at present, but its progress to 100% is quite slow, and they'll hit 100% in 2046, along with the other two plans that I talked about. Air Guard firefighter, they're on an aggressive path. They're at 86%. They'll be at 100% perhaps within five years. We'll see if that really occurs, but that's the planning estimate. And then finally, we have Paid Fire Act. This is a closed plan. There are no current active members in the plan. It has a known funding problem, and it requires a legislative solution. It's going to be the topic of an interim topic with the Joint Appropriations Committee this summer and this fall. Legislation. There weren't too many bills in the last legislative session, but there were a couple worth talking about. Senate File 56 added a couple of enforcement officers in the Gaming Commission to be a law enforcement plan. That seemed appropriate. We had a bill called House Bill 107 that may give the state auditors some more flexibility in how we pay pension payments. Potentially, this could improve some investment earnings and make things more administratively efficient for the system, although it won't directly affect members and retirees. There was a bill to introduce a COLA, a cost-of-living adjustment, on a one-time ad hoc basis. It wouldn't have been an ongoing COLA, but it would have provided some one-time payments. This is House Bill 221. The total cost of the plan as that bill was introduced was approximately $5 million. But the House ultimately did not consider the bill for introduction, and so, the process died there. Over the years, across the United States, because of declining interest rates and economic conditions, almost all states had to engage in some form of pension reform. Many states, as shown here in blue, introduced employee contribution rates. That included Wyoming. In fact, we're still in the process of finishing out some of those schedules. In addition, many states reduced pension benefits. Wyoming was amongst those. A Tier Two in the Public Employee Plan was introduced in 2012, which provides an adequate, but still lesser, benefit than Tier One. And then, many states adjusted their cost-of-living adjustments. That included Wyoming. Wyoming is amongst the states that's the most aggressive in that, because they did affect current retirees. Some states, the reductions to COLAs affected new hires, or it affected current employees and new hires, and didn't affect retirees. Cost-of-living adjustments are not guaranteed by most of the plans. The 2012 legislation that introduced Tier Two also set a requirement that we have to be 100% funding in order to recommend that the Legislature award a cost-of-living allowance. It's not only 100%, it actually has to have a, stay above 100% with a margin of security once you give the increase. The last cost-of-living allowance awarded by the Wyoming Retirement Board was in 2008, and applied only to retirees that had retired in 2006 and earlier. We know that the impact on retirees is getting to be significant, and the WRS Board has advocated for a legislatively funded COLA, and we've provided them with all the tools, how to estimate these things. And we're still providing those previously awarded COLAs, but at this point, we haven't provided one since really 2008. We realize the impact of inflation. There is a self-funded option that's available now in recent years, where a new retiree can elect to pay themselves a COLA by accepting a reduced benefit initially. However, it is a little different than a COLA provided by the plan, and retirees have to make their own decision as to how they're going to do that. This is an example of one bill that we analyzed recently. It shows you the cost of a COLA. To provide a cost-of-living allowance of 1/10th of 1% per year since retirement, so somebody that's been retired for 10 years would get a 1% increase. Someone who's been retired for 20 years would receive a 2% increase. To do that one time costs about $5 million, but to do that ongoing for the length of their retirement is almost 10 times that amount. Someone who's been retired for 20 years would receive a 2% increase. To do that one time costs about $5 million. But to do that ongoing for the length of their retirement is almost 10 times that amount. Here, it's almost, it's more than $45 million. So you can see why COLAs are expensive, and that's why the legislature is concerned. In order to fund pensions, you have to make money in your investments. As I discussed earlier, 70% of the pension benefit is ultimately paid for by investment earnings. Our present goal is to achieve a 7% return on a long-term average to fund the pension. We don't necessarily expect to meet that in any given short-term timeframe, including, you know, just one to five years. In any given year, investment results can either be well above 7%, as they were last year, we earned 11%. The year before, we earned 18%, 18.72%. But the year prior to that, we had a loss of 3.5%. It's only over the long term that we expect to really achieve a 7% return. Our investment consultants are looking at our investment portfolio. In the long term, they think that right now, we will probably earn about 7.2%. So 7% is slightly conservative. But these things change over time and are always monitored by the board. The board will engage another study this summer called an experience study and more thoroughly analyze the rate of 7% and see whether that is the appropriate rate going forward. Most state systems have reduced their state assumed rate of return. The recent median across the United States was 7.25%. But most states are assuming more conservative adjustments, and they're sort of coming back to where Wyoming already is. Will we stay at 7% or have to go lower? Only time will tell. We employ an investment team. Sam Masoudi is our Chief Investment Officer, and he has seven people that work for him, as shown here on the chart. And he works closely with Makita, the investment consultants, to manage our investment program. We know that in order to achieve the financial goals of the system, we're going to have to take some risks. But the pension system is better able to do that than an individual because we have professional management and we have a long timeframe. Therefore, what happens in any given year doesn't matter so much so that we can invest for long-term growth as compared to maybe an individual in retirement would have to invest in short-term bond funds, which lower risk, lower volatility, but lower returns. The asset allocation of the Wyoming retirement system is shown here. Equities are stocks, things that you would see on the New York Stock Exchange and other stock exchanges, public traded markets. It says, you know, we're 49% invested in stocks, but actually, we're more aggressive than that because we also have investments in marketable alternatives. These are money we place with managers that may invest in stocks or may switch to bonds. They have an investment mandate that allows them to invest in a variety of assets depending upon market conditions. So it's hard to describe them as either fixed income or equity at any given time. And then we have some investments in private markets. Some of these are private equity. They're different than publicly traded equity because they're private investments that aren't necessarily traded on a daily basis on a stock exchange. They're more sophisticated and in some cases have some risk. But also, some of these things aren't available to the public markets, and we think we can get some good returns here if you choose carefully. About 20% of the portfolio is in bonds or fixed income, as we call it. In the end, although it's 49% equity, it really functions like a more aggressive portfolio that's at least 70% equity and only 30% bonds or perhaps even 80/20. The way this works is that the board approves the asset allocation, and then the team implements it. And we hire other managers. We typically don't buy and sell bonds directly. We hire managers to do that for us, managers that we think have expertise in the various global markets that we invest in. Here's some online resources. We have a good website with online access to view your pension account and your 457 plan. You can access plan information. We have calculators on the website to estimate your benefit, what a service purchase would cost, to help you plan for retirement, as well as all the information you expect out of the system, our financial reports, newsletters, and all the additional communications. Well, that does a short overview of the system in the spring of 2021, and we'll close the pre-recorded session, and we'll take questions. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you very much. Hope you enjoyed that presentation, and we'll be pleased to answer your questions. And welcome to the second installment of our town hall meeting. And right now, we're going to continue to answer questions that have come in over email about your retirement and future retirement security. So Mike, question to you. This comes from Carol Reed at wyo.gov. I am close to retirement and want to add extra for my retirement. Where do I put the extra money?
Well, thanks, Carol. That's a great question. What we find most people do if you have extra money and you're getting close to retirement is to take advantage of the catch-up provision with the 457 deferred compensation program. So currently for 2021, and these amounts are updated annually, you can contribute $19,500 to your supplemental 457 plan. The catch-up provision allows those close to retirement to contribute an extra $6,500 on top of the $19,500. So if you have extra money and resources and are getting close to retirement, you certainly can sock more of your money away in the deferred compensation program. One other thing that I would note here is that you are, you do have the possibility of purchase, making a one-time purchase of service in the pension plan. What a lot of people find is if they've been able to put extra money in the 457 deferred comp plan for a few years, then you can do a rollover and take money out of your 457 and use that to purchase your service in the defined benefit pension plan.
That would be a smart move for some folks. It allows you to do it as part of your 457 savings.
Exactly. All right, Dave, one for you. It would be great to have a vetted resource to make decisions on 457 pre-tax versus Roth. CPAs don't know, financial planners don't know, so it ends up a bit of a crap shoot. Any reference materials would be helpful. Thank you.
Well, I think in answering that, I'd just have to say, you know, I tend to agree. It probably just is a crap shoot. Because here's the real thing. Most of the CPAs and financial planners will look at this and say, well, when is it the tax rates are going to be the lowest? Is it going to be when you're a retiree or during your working years? I don't think there's any way to really know that. The one thing that I think you do know is that when you retire with a balance in the 457 plan, that if you put it in pre-tax, then when you take it out, it's going to be taxed as ordinary income. And so you can kind of get a false sense of security saying, well, I got this much saved for retirement. Well, you really don't have that much because part of it's going to be taxes you take it out. If you have the Roth option, it's much clearer. If you put it in on the Roth, you pay taxes early on it, but when you take it out, it's not taxed. And so when you retire, the account balance that you have in the 457 plan is truly for retirement. So in my opinion, Roth is clearer and better for retirement security. In terms of which is financially better for minimizing your federal income taxes, I think it really is a crap shoot, and I don't think there's any way around it. That's my personal opinion.
Thanks, Dave.
All right, Mike. Here's a question from higher education. So you've got to answer this one. It's from higher education. I previously worked at a Wyoming community college and now for a department in Wyoming state government. When I worked at the community college, I selected TIA for my retirement plan. This is the option that people have in a higher education. They don't have to be in the pension. They can contribute to the T-CREF 403B plan. Okay. If and when I secure a permanent position with the state, would I be able to select the Wyoming Retirement Plan system for my plan after previously having been TIA? That is higher education.
You know, that's a great question, and it makes me think of one of my professors that I had over at the university who told me, we were talking about, it was a personnel class, and we were talking about pensions. And he said, if I had known that I was going to be working here for 25 years, I would have picked Wyoming Retirement and not TIA-CREF. But he said he was young and had to make that decision, and he thought, no way am I going to have a career at the university, so I'm going to take TIA. And then he had a bit of buyer's remorse later on. One of the things that is good news in this situation is that if you have a qualifying event, that is, if you have a break in service, for example, you work at Western Wyoming Community College, you stop working there, and then six months later, you start working at the University of Wyoming, you can elect to be a member of the Wyoming Retirement System. And you can even take your TIA money and roll that over into the 457 deferred compensation with Wyoming Retirement so that all of your accounts are held at the same agency with us for ease of access and management of those accounts.
Okay. Service credit.
Yes. So we had a question come in about buying service credit and using the calculator. Their question is, if you buy 12 months, does that get you 12 months closer to retirement or only six months closer to retirement? Are there practical examples that you could give that would help provide clarity?
I think clarity might come from understanding what we mean by a service credit and why it matters about getting closer to retirement. Every pension system has a thing called a normal retirement age. And in the public employee plan, the normal retirement age for Tier One is age 60, and the normal retirement age for Tier Two is age 65. In both of those tiers, you can retire earlier than age 60 or earlier than age 65. But if you do so, you would pay an early retirement reduction of 5% per year that you're short of normal retirement age. So if you're in Tier One and you're retiring at age 58, you're two years short of normal retirement. And whatever your retirement benefit is, it's going to get a 10% haircut, 5% per year for being two years short of the normal retirement age for the plan. There's a way around it, though, and that's if you hit Rule of 85. That's the combination of your age and your years of service. So if you were age 55 and had 30 years of service, that would be in total of 85 under the rule calculation, and you could retire without the early retirement reduction factor. So I think what this question is really getting to is, if I buy service, how does that help me in reaching the rule? And the answer is, it moves you one year closer on the rule. Because if you buy 12 months of service, that's 12 months of service, and instead of, say, 29 years of service, now you would have 30 years of service. And so it buys you, 12 months of service buys you one year towards credit on the rule. Ordinarily, when you're working, you advance on the rule two years at a time because each year, you have another year of service, and gradually, you're a year older. If you buy service, you just get the service credit, and we do not make you a year older just because you bought service. And then the other thing is, once you've hit normal retirement age for your plan, age 60 in Tier One, for example, or age 65 in Tier Two, then the rule doesn't really matter anymore because you're already hitting normal retirement age. You're not going to get the early retirement factor because you've hit normal retirement age. And so the rule calculation doesn't really apply anymore. Okay. This is a question on Roth and pre-tax money. Here's the question. I can take my pension in three years, and my concern is that most of my money is in a Roth after taxes. Will I be taxed on this part when I take the disbursements? And how do I pay the taxes on what I have taken out before taxes? Will all of my disbursements be taxed for federal?
And I think there's, you know, we obviously had another question that talked a little bit about Roth and tax rates, and I think there's always a lot of confusion when people look at Roth and pre-tax or post-tax money. So if you're contributing in the deferred compensation to a Roth or post-tax money, you've already paid the taxes on that money when you make the contribution to your Roth. So when you pull that money out in retirement, you are not going to pay any taxes at all on that money because you already paid the taxes before you put the money into the Roth. So basically, it depends if it's pre-tax or if it's post-tax and how that money went into the account. But anytime you're doing a Roth, you're paying the taxes now, and then you're not paying the taxes later. One of the reasons people really like Roth accounts is because they feel you don't pay taxes on the earnings. So maybe I contributed $100,000 over my lifetime to a Roth account that's now worth $175,000. That $75,000 that I earned above and beyond what I originally put in, I'm not paying taxes on that amount. And so that's one of the reasons why people view Roths very favorably. But as Dave alluded to earlier, it really depends on your tax situation and if you think you're going to be paying more taxes now or more taxes later. But this person does not have to worry about taking their money out in retirement from their Roth account. I will just add really quickly that if you do a service purchase in the pension, it depends if you use Roth money to buy a service purchase, then when that money comes out, a portion, and they're going to annuitize it over your lifespan, but a portion of each payment will be tax-free. It's basically the portion of your money that they're giving back to you that you use to buy a service purchase. But most people, when they buy a service purchase, are using pre-tax money, and so when it comes out in retirement, all of it's taxed as ordinary income.
Right. Well, it depends on how you make that service purchase.
Exactly.
Right.
So Dave, our next question is about Social Security. Can you please explain the situation where if our Wyoming retirement is over a certain amount, we may lose some or all of our Social Security? Is this even a thing or a rumor?
Well, it is sort of a thing, but it depends upon your situation. First of all, it has nothing to do with the amount of your Wyoming retirement. It is just a case of whether or not you've participated in public employment and didn't pay into the Social Security system. Some states are like that. Social Security participation for public employees goes back to the 1950s because before that, public employees were not in Social Security. They were edited the system in a series of law changes in the early 1950s. But if you had a public pension in place, and typically, this happened in a lot of public safety plans, firemen and police officers, well, then you could opt out of Social Security. And so we have today, as a result of various agreements with the federal government under what's called a Section 218 agreement, a surge across the United States where some public employees are in Social Security and some are not. In Wyoming, everybody is in Social Security except for paid firefighters. Paid firefighters voted to opt out of Social Security in the 50s because they had a public pension and they were able to do so. So in today's Wyoming retirement system, typically, the employees in Paid Fire B are not in Social Security and everybody else is. If you worked for an employer, a public employer, where you did not pay into Social Security, and then you earn a Social Security benefit later on with some other employment, then the Social Security benefit you earn from that other employment will be reduced by what's called the Government Pension Offset in the Social Security Administration. And it all has to do with the progressivity of the Social Security system and their belief, as codified in federal law, that people can earn a basic Social Security benefit without that many years of credit. And if you were to do so after staying out of the system for a long time, that's not fair to the system, and so there's going to be a pension offset. So it doesn't eliminate your Social Security in that case, but it may reduce it. And for further information, you should contact the Social Security Administration. It really, in Wyoming, it only affects Fire B folks, but there can be folks that come in from other government employment that work in the state. Because it really depends upon your overall employment history if you ever worked for an employer where you did not pay into Social Security.
Great, thanks, Dave. And I would just point out that we have an education team here at our office. They are Social Security certified, so they've taken certain tests and educational classes to learn about Social Security. And while we can't offer advice, we can certainly offer education. And so if you have specific questions about Social Security, you can call and talk to our education department, and they would be happy to answer your questions. Dave, the next question is about the deferred compensation plan. Can you take a loan from a 457 plan like you can with a 401K plan?
Well, the answer here is pretty simple. From our 457 plan, the answer is no, we don't have a loan provision. All of these deferred compensation programs, like a 401K or a 457 plan from some other plan sponsor, they all have to decide whether or not they're going to offer a loan option. And a loan option in those plans And a loan option in those plans is where you take money out of the plan, pre-retirement, and then you pay it back to the plan. Some plans have that and it's all a decision of the governing body that acts as the plan sponsor for that. The Wyoming Retirement Board is the plan sponsor for the Wyoming 457B plan and the board does not think that loans are a good idea. It's damaging to retirement security and so we don't have a loan option. There is an option to take money out of the plan early and pay it back in certain limited situations called hardship distributions, but that's not really a loan. So the answer is for us, no. And it all depends for other plans upon what the governing documents are for your particular plan.
Thank you.
All right. Let's go to, it's a question here about the 20% number. Mike, I was told that when you take your money out of deferred comp, you had to pay a 20% fee. But when you retire, you don't have to pay a fee. What is the correct answer?
So the correct answer is that there's never any fees. So we don't charge fees at all. In the deferred compensation, the underlying investments do have a small fee and there is a small administrative fee, less than half a percentage point, which is charged to administer the 457 plan. But there's never a fee when you take your money out. I think what the person here is referencing is whether you take the money out early or you take it out in retirement. And this is going to be true for both the 457 as well as the defined benefit if you separated from employment and took a withdrawal. We always withhold 20% federal income tax. Again, it's not a fee, it's taxes that we're withholding on your behalf that the IRS requires us to withhold because they know that you're going to owe at least that much money on the amount that you've withdrawn from the plan. Again, this can be whether it's in the 457, your supplemental savings, or if you terminated employment and did a withdrawal from the pension, we would withhold 20%. In retirement, you're going to fill out paperwork that tells us how much taxes you want us to withhold. We don't know all your sources of income. We don't know what, you know, you might have other sources of money in retirement. And so we don't want to over or under withhold taxes. We want you to tell us how much you want to withhold. And that's part of the package when you go into retirement. You will fill out paperwork for both the 457 plan and the pension plan that says how much taxes you want us to withheld, withhold. So there's never a fee and the automatic 20% is only if you're withdrawing money prior to your normal retirement.
And the 20% is just withholding, which your actual taxes are going to be, it depends upon when you file your income taxes.
Sure.
But we're required to withhold 20% off the top as an estimate on a termination refund where somebody's cashing out their retirement.
That's exactly right, Dave. So the next question kind of gave us a laugh and I, I thought Dave would be the right person to answer it. Is it typical that your department sends out notification for your town hall meeting only three hours before the event?
No, sorry about that. It is typical that we put out a notice about three hours before the event, it's kind of a last-minute notice. But we have put out notices, you know, throughout the week. I think the state email went out on May 11th a week ago and we published on our website. But we apologize if somebody got a last-minute notification. We try to notify these things as best we can. If we need to make an improvement in that, we'll certainly do that. So apologize for that.
Well, and I think that this is a great opportunity for us to plug our Facebook page. You know, we do advertise our events, we put our newsletter up there, the educators have their travel schedule, that's also on our website. So I encourage you to like us on Facebook, follow us, regularly check the website. And we do, we are always looking for improved communication with our membership and extra ways to reach out to you. So we will continue to improve that process and we appreciate the feedback.
Yeah, and if we can't be liked on Facebook, you can just tolerate us on Facebook.
Right, there you go.
Okay. Here's a, here's a fairly typical question. Thomas asked, how can we use, how can we use the 457 plan to buy years of service?
Well, that's a great question, Thomas. And I think that we've sort of touched on that. You know, again, with your 457, and this is very, very common, what we see is that either whether people are putting catch-up contributions or maybe when you start with the state, you roll over that 401K. You can roll a 401K or a 403B into the 457 plan from previous employment. And so as you build up your 457 supplemental savings, people can use that money. You can take a distribution out of the money that you've accumulated in that account and use that money to do a service purchase on the pension side. And so we see this all the time. I think it's very common because where are you going to come up with a pot of money to buy service? Where that's, you know, whether it's six months, you're close to retirement and six months gets you to the rule of 85? Or maybe you're mid-career and you've saved enough that you can buy five years, knowing that that'll help you reach an earlier retirement date than before. So people all the time use their deferred comp money to buy service. You can contact our deferred comp department and they can help you do that. They will partner with our defined benefit because the defined benefit is going to have to give the estimate and say, how much is it going to cost? We used to say the old rule of thumb was five years of service was about your annual salary. That has gone up a little bit more at this time due to mortality tables, people living longer, things like that. But you know, if you're buying five years, it's, it's going to cost a little bit of money. We're always happy to provide an estimate to you and using your deferred compensation to make that purchase is definitely the way to go.
Very good. Michael, have we got some more questions that have come in?
We have a question, can I roll IRA money into my 457?
Yes, you can. That was the last question that's come in. I believe there's a problem on a Roth IRA at the moment because it's a legal thing in federal law to a 457 plan. And hopefully that will get changed, but a regular IRA can be rolled into a 457 plan, no problem. So a traditional IRA, the answer is yes. That's all the questions we have. Mike, is there any concluding comments? We've got about five minutes left in our scheduled time.
Right. Thanks, Dave. I, you know, I just really appreciate you taking the time to join us. I would make sure that you update your beneficiary if you haven't already. That's one of the things that we see a lot, that people do not update their beneficiary and that's so important. Or if you're a newer employee, some people don't have a beneficiary on file. So I would just put the little plug for beneficiaries there. But I thank you for your interest. I think retirement is something that affects so many people in the state, especially because we have a larger public sector than most states have. And so we really touch a lot of Wyoming and we are pleased to support your financial security and partner with you as you plan out your retirement and work throughout your career.
Yeah, my concluding comment would be, here's to you as a public employee. I've been a public employee for 42 years, at federal level, at the local level, and now at the state level. Public employees do important work in this country. They do work that is necessary. Sometimes it's difficult work, sometimes it's disgusting work, if you've ever been to a wastewater treatment plant. Sometimes it's just flat-out dangerous, as people in public safety understand. So public employees work hard and it's difficult because sometimes the salaries aren't the best. But you can build retirement security. If you pay attention and understand your benefits, you can achieve retirement security in the method that the retirement board suggests. It's social security plus a defined benefit pension and then supplemental savings through a 457 plan or the like. And you really can enjoy the retirement security that you deserve as a public employee. Thanks for your service and thanks for tuning in.
Have a good evening.